Okay, we're about to start the budget work session. And we have Carol Hurley, Kristin Michael, and Susan Quinn. Ms. Michael?
Thank you so much. We'd like to spend the bulk of the time today at the work session going through the Budget Task Force. But I wanted to first ask if there were any questions from year end that people need to ask today before we head into the Budget Task Force.
Mr. Moon?
Yes. I want to ask either Dr. Garza or Susan or Kristin that when you came up with this particular recommendation for the year-end budget review, whether you have considered any of the recommendations from some of the advisory committees contained in advisory committee reports. I'm going to be specific. For example, there was, at one point, as I recollect, I forget exactly which committee, that there was a mention of this year's budget not including the funding for all literacy program and HIPAA program. Is that true?
No, the funding for the HIPAA program is included. Right, and I can get you more specifics, but that funding was not included.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, A's advisory committee made a couple of positive recommendations to be considered either at the end of year-end or be the year 2016 on for $165,000 per adult ESOL program and also $126,000 for vehicle maintenance and replacement for driver education behind the program. Whether those were considered, if so, I didn't see them, and so why not? They were not included.
Sure. When we look at the Adult Education Program, they actually ended the year with a positive ending balance of nearly $400,000. So this year, they were able to purchase some replacement vehicles, and certainly within their current fund balance, if they felt like they wanted to either purchase more vehicles or else expend more funding in terms of adult ESOL education, they could. I did ensure that we are meeting our match requirement, per the state requirement, for the adult ESOL education grant. But they have sufficient ending balance if they wish to do either of those recommendations from their committee.
And we're also looking at bringing in those vehicles into our vehicle replacement with all the other vehicles within the school system. So we're also looking at it to see where they are compared to the rest of the vehicles in the school system. But there is, as Kristin mentioned, sufficient balance in their fund currently to be able to do some of the items that they recommended.
So for the ESOL, all the ESOL program, if there is a demand for model systems, they could use existing funding they have to meet the needs.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. McLaughlin?
So I did receive inquiry within my district that I thought might be helpful, either if other board members or Dr. Garza wanted to speak to, which was the decision for this committee to meet in a closed setting versus in a public setting.
Are you talking about the task force?
Yeah, we haven't quite gotten there yet.
Oh, jump the gun.
Okay, well, now, I guess, if there are no other questions on the year-end budget for FY '15, now we'll turn to the Budget Task Force. And I have Ms. McLaughlin on the list after staff make their presentation. Thank you.
I'd also like to invite Matt Haley up to the table. He is the chair of the Budget Task Force. And then our vice chair, Mary Porter, couldn't be here today, but we'll go through all the task force members in just a minute. So first, I wanted to remind the community and the board, it is the superintendent's FY '17 Budget Task Force. And all of the documents and information that we're sharing with the task force, we're posting on the public web. So Kathy Partlow has kindly enough agreed to drive today, so she's going to be pulling up the information behind me. Since the information that we have is posted on the public web, today we'll show you how to get to that information from the public web. Just as a side note, we also did enhance our main FCPS page. We had gotten feedback that finding the Budget Task Force from the main page wasn't as easy as we had hoped. So in the news section at the bottom of the page, and I know I didn't tell Kathy this, we did enhance that area to specifically reference the Budget Task Force and to put a direct link there that people can get to. So once we get to the Budget Task Force website, this is what Kathy is on now.
It's in the middle of the page under '17 budget, Budget Task Force link.
So under the section for FY '17 budget, we really tried to enhance the content there. If you remember previously, you had to actually click on the word "more," and we didn't feel that that was clear, as clear as we wanted it to be for the community. So we really tried to enhance the text in that area. So once you get to the Budget Task Force website, one of the first questions we've been getting is, who are the members of the task force? How are those members selected? So we've included the list of the task force members on this site, as well as who recommended them. So this chart will provide you with that information. We've gotten many requests from other people who want to participate on this task force. And this is a working group, and we really needed to be mindful of keeping the number of people to a manageable level. So we really believe that the people on the task force are able to represent the community as a whole and come from a really wide range of groups.
And I want to interrupt you there with regard to why these are not public meetings. As with any working group, you know, this is not a board meeting, and it's not a meeting of any kind of board, committee. This is the superintendent's task force to help us, at least from a starting perspective, as I have to develop the proposed budget that will be presented on January the 7th, where I have to propose and present a balanced budget to provide an opportunity for key stakeholders, opinion leaders, to help us from the very beginning. But it's just a starting point. We've had a number of other people, my goodness, I think if we opened it up, I don't know telling how many people would be on this committee, but we needed to keep it to about 30, 35, to make it manageable. Because as you can imagine, and Matt, we're so appreciative of your willingness to help us lead the group, it's very tedious work, and it is definitely a working group. And so we needed it relatively small. The group has been great. They've really committed and doing a lot of work. And their work will be presented, as was pointed out, it's already presented on our website, but we'll be presenting to the board at frequent opportunities. You'll remember the timeline. So we're not working in a vacuum. And there will be many, many, many opportunities for the public, the general public, to weigh in. There already are, in some ways. UserVoice is being used quite a bit. Many of you've been to our website and seen that we have many, many people putting their ideas into that website. But you'll also see a new software, a new system that we're going to use this year for the first time, this kind of a crowdsourcing software. So anyone that would like to can actually present us a budget that they think that we need to consider. We also have community meetings lined up, and we'll have many opportunities throughout the fall for constituents to weigh in. So we have to start somewhere, and we wanted a small working group to help us get the work moving forward. But it's not, you know, it's not the last time, nor will it be. There'll be plenty of opportunity for people to weigh in. I think it'd be very difficult for them to do the kind of work that we're engaged in if we have people sitting around the perimeter or if we had the media in the room. That's just, from my experience, it makes the work very, very difficult, particularly when you're dealing with a very difficult topic. It creates conditions where people are reticent to put, to talk about ideas or to put ideas forward for fear that someone's going to walk out and say, "Well, so-and-so said they want us to eliminate whatever." So we wanted it to be a non-threatening environment so we can get our best thinking on the table to start the work. But we intend for all this to be transparent. And I think we've, you know, we've shown that by posting all of their work. And I think we have an intentional plan of keeping the community engaged all throughout the fall, leading up to the presentation on January the 7th, so.
And I also want to acknowledge, we have a number of task force members that are in the audience today. So thank all of you for coming. I see multiple task force members, George, Charlie, Steve. So thank you. So the task force has two primary objectives. The first is using community input to identify a comprehensive list of potential fee increases and program reductions. That's the piece that they're working on right now that we'll talk about a little bit more. And then the second step is from that list of all of the potential reductions and fee increases to develop prioritized reductions into three scenarios. A scenario where we have $50 million in reductions, a second where we have $75 million, and then a third, $100. So we'll have community input at both steps in that process, right now, in terms of getting that entire list of potential reductions together, and then again, community input in terms of developing the scenarios. So next, when we look at the calendar, as Dr. Garza indicated, the task force is met twice, and we'll talk a little bit more about what we've done in those two meetings and where we are going forward. But the calendar goes through and provides all of the detailed points in terms of when the committee is meeting. They're highlighted in green. And then also, the updates to the school board are posted here as well, and also the date for when we're going to launch the online tool that we're going to demonstrate for you later today. So this calendar, you can see, is posted within that full list of items under our Budget Task Force website. When we look at the dates and the timing, also on this, you'll see that we have our two community engagement dates and locations. I wanted to point out for everybody today that those dates have shifted slightly from what we originally projected. So if you remember back to when I was here in June, the dates are slightly different, so I wanted to point that out to make sure everyone knows. And we've also posted the locations for them as well.
And you'll remember this because I think we got feedback from folks that said the dates we'd originally proposed might not be times where people really could engage. And so we moved that in response to feedback that we had gotten. Matt, did you want to add to that?
Just wanted to add that I got feedback from two supervisors that thought that a meeting in August meant that you weren't trying to get feedback. So it wasn't, so pushing it back, I understand intent versus reality, and I'm sure that's the first time you've ever heard there's a difference. But the feedback was very clear that having a meeting the week, the last week of August when DC is empty would be a sign that you didn't want them. So what we also have on that same kind of note, a couple of the supervisors have agreed to post those meeting notices on their newsletters. We really like anybody that's got newsletters to make that as available or as aware as possible, because there's still, you know, a lack of awareness, and we're meeting because of the timing of Labor Day, people are just getting back as we're going. So the 13th sounds like the middle of September, but in reality, it's just a couple days after they get back from vacation.
So we also tried to strategically locate these two meetings, kind of at each end of the county, to try to geographically make sure we picked up all of the locations. And then I want to, again, remind everybody, the tool that we're going to look at later today, the budget tool, will also be a way for people who can't attend these two community meetings to give us the same feedback. So it's really the same opportunity to help us develop those budget scenarios. So keep that in mind as we work through the rest of the items. So the task force has had two meetings to date. The next meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, the 15th. What you'll see on the Budget Task Force website is when we're posting information, we're posting it by the date of the meeting. So people who are following our meetings can see exactly what we gave to the task force for that meeting. So when you look, the first meeting on June 18th was really an informational meeting. We spent a majority of the time at that meeting, providing with the task force with information, going over things like what is the fiscal forecast for next year, and what are all the resources that they have available to them as we work through that. Then in addition to that, one of the things we found is that the task force started to ask us a fair number of questions. So in order to facilitate getting the answers to the task force, and then also being able to share them with the community, we created a new budget question task force version, where we're posting all of the questions that we're getting from the task force and the answers. So you'll also see those on the screen. So for our second meeting, which was held just recently, what we did is we divided the task force into small groups, and we had them go through and start brainstorming potential ideas in terms of reductions and fee increases. They had information that they've gathered from the groups that they're representing. They had the data, preliminary data from UserVoice. We looked at how they could use the program budget if they wanted to resource programs in greater depth, and we really started brainstorming through all of those different options. So what you'll see posted for this meeting coming up this Wednesday is it's the preliminary menu of all of our reduction items that we have posted. And we've sorted them by the first page or all of the items where we have suggestions, but we're not entirely sure how we would cost those suggestions. So we want to make sure. Then the subsequent pages have the suggestions that we've gathered so far that are sorted first by the budget impact, and we've indicated at the bottom of each page what high, medium, or small means potentially in terms of dollars. Those are very rough estimates. Then we've also given, in the green bars going across, what the category is, then what the specific potential reduction or fee is, and then notes to the right in terms of what is the costing specific that we could potentially use. So the task force this week will then begin reviewing this preliminary list, help us provide clarity for the items on the first page, and then ensure that the reductions and fees that we have after that, we've correctly interpreted the information that we've received to date. We'll also give the task force an update on UserVoice. But I want to stop. Do we have any questions on this menu before I head to UserVoice?
When we complete the menu, and it'll be an evolving document, we'll have to keep dating it over the fall. It will look similar to what you all remember we did in fiscal year '15, where we had a list, and we just kept adding it as we got ideas. We would post it, and we would cost it. So that's what we're doing. And there's a reason why, you'll see that how important this is, as we start our work in the fall at work sessions, but also as our community weighs in in developing their various scenarios. That'll be important. I will say now, if it's not going to be said later, we may need to reiterate it, if you have ideas, we need to start collecting your ideas, because it's not just the task force. Leadership team has already begun some work as well, and so we would encourage you to begin collecting your ideas and submitting those so we can, again, have those reflected on our menu, and also those can be costed out.
And to ensure that we're keeping all of the suggestions that we have, you'll also notice at the end of this document, when we have suggestions that we're excluding or not costing right now, we've indicated why we're not costing them right now with a reason. So you'll see those in red as well, because we know we're also going to get many great suggestions, that just because we can't potentially implement them now doesn't mean we don't want to keep good track of them, because we may want to use them later. So you'll see that at the end of this document.
Before you go on, maybe I'll just ask if there are any clarifying questions regarding what you've presented thus far, or the approach, or any of those materials. Ms. McLaughlin, I had you first. You kind of already made your point, but is there anything else you wanted to say about that?
No, I just thank you, Dr. Garza. I thank your comments clarified the inquiry I received.
Okay, good. Thank you. I have Ms. Schultz, Mrs. Smith, Ms. Evans.
So just from a glance on those items, it looks to me like those items are, for lack of a better phrase, a hit list, you know? I mean, basically. But it's not necessarily programmatic in nature. So is the plan, I mean, something like modify school schedules to trimesters, yeah, I'd like to know what that costs. I mean, I don't know. But where is the program approach? Because I kind of, this makes me a little bit nervous that if this is the only way we're going to go about potentially costing out priorities.
Give me an example of what you're talking about, because I see that some of these are programmatic.
Cost of IB middle years, cost of IB elementary PYP, cost of...
I think all that's, it's on the list. Some of those are on the list.
And I think because what we're looking at right now on the screen is sorted by cost, that's why the items at the top tend to be very compensation-heavy. But if you had a few pages in, you'll start to see some of the program reductions, because those dollar values are smaller, so they're showing up in...
Some of it, I think it is very much programmatic.
I mean, one of the things that you've talked about before is a different approach to delivering, you know, academy classes, and that there's potentially less expensive ways to go about, you know, academy class delivery, not necessarily cutting it, but being more efficient. I mean, these are, you know, so just to put a price on something and say, you know, are you going to line up your carnival game and take that duck out? You know, I'm just, you know, wondering if this represents the composite way that we're going to go across it. And I don't know if we brought it up in a little bit of our discussion in PEC this morning about what's the next step for the board? Because it's one thing for the task force to do it, but what's, when do we have this discussion?
And you'll start, in some of the work sessions, you'll know that they're work sessions. I think that's a very important question, and that is something that we've talked about at LT. Do we want to continue to kind of, you know, it's going to be hard to do this, but just kind of start to cut at the margins? Or do we really want to change the way we fundamentally change our programs and services, which is more of a philosophical approach? I think some of these do fundamentally change, like a different kind of master schedule at the high school level. That's a change. AAP programming, that's talked about quite a bit in here. The different CTE...
I think you just actually maybe hit on it, because the question is, I don't think that we'll ever get there nibbling away at the margins. I mean, we, there would, you would literally have to just pick off every other one on this list in order to get to $100 million. So that's why I'm asking, what's the board's work, and when is that schedule of the board's work to go, okay, how are you going to start wrestling the bear? Because I don't think the option is to not wrestle the bear. So, you know, it's one thing for the task force to be doing stuff and to make recommendations, but at the end of the day, the tough nut to crack here is, how do you get a school division economized in the face of, you know, $100 million deficit? And it's not going to be the onesie-twosies, even if you pick 100 of them.
And I think those conversations will have to happen all throughout the fall, definitely.
Right, and that's...
It's listed on Board Docs under the link that says Budget Development and Review Timeline. So it's on this page. It's a little confusing, because there's so much really good information in there. But if you go to the task force, you start there, and then you can click on Budget Development and Review Timeline, and that's one we've looked at before. But I think that one addresses your questions about, you know, the role of the board versus the task force, and when Dr. Garza presents a proposal.
Okay, all right, that's good. And the only thing I would say is, we've got to have the scope, like I always ask, data and context. We've got to have the scope of, how many students does that involve? How many employees does involve? What's the cost per student? What's the cost per employee? What's the scope of what's involved? So that we understand, are we looking at a program that impacts, you know, 100 employees, 5,000 employees, 30,000 employees, you know, all high school students, you know, 200 high school students, you know? Data and context.
So, and so that will be provided at some point, right, for the board, that level of detail?
Correct. This is our really early preliminary activity. So the task force met once and brainstormed, and this is really the outcome of that. So as we continue to develop it, we'll certainly be adding impact statements, how many students, quantifying all of those pieces. But we're really at the early stages, but we wanted to share it with you today.
Very good. That helps, I think, everybody understand. So I have Ms. Evans, followed by Mr. Stork and Mrs. Strauss.
Yes, I was just curious, in your list, there seemed to be a lot of things that were excluded. What was the basis on which certain things were excluded?
So when you look at the excluded items, which begin on page five, what we've done is, in the red bar on top of it, we wrote the reason that the items in that section were excluded. So in the middle of page five, you'll see the first group of items are things that we've already implemented, for example. So when we're being suggested to eliminate the administrative interns, that was a reduction we took in FY '15, for example. So we coded that as already implemented. So in the next section, you'll see we're indicating that those items will be included in the compensation study that's already underway. So each red bar has...
Or there were some that were recommendations that would not generate any revenue for us, because they're either federally funded, or they're in different funds. So they're, you know, like, for example, there were some things about the construction fund that would not help on this issue.
And then also had some ideas where we would have to increase costs. So any of those items are categorized on the items that are excluded as increasing cost to the fund for right now.
So I'm just seeing a few, and it's not that I'm advocating for these things, but I'm seeing some things that appear to me that, like, eliminate online textbooks, that was excluded because it was determined that it wouldn't have a budget impact? Is that why that was excluded?
So because we've already purchased the online textbooks, we've already paid that cost for that contract?
I see.
So we can't save money, because the expenditure's already occurred?
I see. And so, and then it says things like sell lease air rights. That was excluded because...
I'm trying to look what category that's in.
And again, it's not that I'm advocating for these things. I'm just trying to understand why things are...
It's probably in a longer-term implementation section, right? So we really tried to go through in each of the red bars and say, oh, so yes, that is under a longer-term implementation. So something that we're looking at, but we didn't think that we could have that completed in time for this exercise.
Okay. Well, I mean, I understand mandated services, but where it says "none," is that supposed to mean there was no revenue impact, where it says "none"? Is that the...
The word "none" that's falling at the top of page eight is a carryover. That's just from another coding. It shouldn't be there. So that category is still following the mandated services section.
Oh, I see. Okay.
That word "none" should be deleted.
Okay.
So, for example, at the top of that page, it said charge for summer school remediation. The state won't allow us, elementary summer school is a mandated free program, for example.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Stork?
I know you touched on it at the beginning of the meeting, the, kind of, the overview, and I just want to, I want to understand better how we're going to build awareness and build, really, some of the, at least, if not consensus, at least some of the ground swell for some options versus other options. And is there any kind of a process that you're doing, other than the meetings, with community meetings? Is there anything else that's being connected to this? Any kind of other surveys or other things that we're looking for?
So I think...
Build, in other words, to take whatever the committee's going to do, the task force's going to do, and then ultimately build...
So I think in just a minute, when we demonstrate the budget tool, you're going to see how this menu of potential reductions feeds into that. And I think that tool is really going to generate a lot of interest and involvement from the community. And I think you'll see how they relate, and then where that impact will come from.
I'm hopeful of that, and I think definitely the high IQ folks, the guys, folks who are typically involved with our school stuff, I'm sure will get that, and I'm sure. But what about the, to try to broaden that appeal and to increase, I mean, we're doing advertisements, I'm, in other words, how are we, obviously kit messages, but what are we doing? And really, the ground floor of schools, I mean, September is coming up right now. What have we done to have material that are going to be passed out or shared, or people are going to be engaged in, to make sure that they're on the ground floor running? Because we need this feedback, really, in September, for it to be particularly valuable with all the other things that you all are trying to do. So how, what has been done already to make sure that we deliver on that?
So I think as we started the task force and as we launched the UserVoice, that was all shared through the kit messages out through the community. I think as we develop the menu of options, we will be doing another communications throughout the community, and we're hopeful that this tool, while we won't be able to get it translated into other languages, that we probably will have paper versions in different languages so they can either complete that, submit it to a school, and somebody could enter it. So we're still working through some of that, and how to get this information out to our community. But we are going through a whole communication strategy with our communications office on how to get this information out in the early fall, because that's also, the community meetings and all the input through the new tool is what is supposed, that should be helping the task force guide their priorities on where to put certain reduction items in the different buckets. We're also going to be working with Dr. Garza and to try to provide some guidance or direction to the task force about doing some priorities and decision framework, because, you know, we have to know as a system, the impacts and the priorities, and I think this is what Ms. Schultz was alluding to, about we have to know the impacts of these programs. So we're going to be working through that with Dr. Garza through the month of August in order to be able to provide that information to the task force.
And that's, that clearly is a core of my question, but what I'm also not hearing is the kind of engagement that goes to what we consistently miss out on, which is tying back into the community associations and the others who aren't, don't have kids in school, who aren't going to be generally on kit messages, or aren't kind of high-IQ FCS folks. What are we doing to broaden the awareness and outreach and engagement on this? Because I think, from my perspective, we have to do that, or we're not going to have, we're not changing the outcome, other than making some tough decisions and getting, people getting upset with us, we're not going to change really the consciousness and the commitment to that outcome.
Mr. Stork, I think that in the coming weeks, as we continue this conversation, I know Matt and Marty and others have been working with us. We'll have a communication strategy around this. Some of it has already started. I know that schedules to all the editorial boards, that's being worked on right now, to get out to that broader audience. We're also looking at a form of listening tour, but not exactly the same, so there's more opportunity for engagement in all of the regions. So we're working through that, because we do think that, you know, that was a great way for us to really get the message out over these last couple of years, you know, how do we front-load some of that? So we'll continue... So we'll continue to think about and plan and strategize around engagement in the broader community. I think it's a little early to talk about exactly what we're going to cut, but I think certainly we need to be talking about the fact that we have this challenge.
I'm, I'm agreeing with you about the awareness and what we're cutting, but I, I think we all recognize what will get people's attention, and it won't be us talking about the budget. Let's face it. It's going to be about us talking about what may get cut, that somebody might view as important and significant, and something they're not going to care for. And, and I just, the placeholder that I'm putting in here is what we historically do not do very well at, and this goes way before your time, Dr. Garza, which is engaging the broader community, because they, they typically aren't as attuned to what we're doing. And that means we have to reach out to them more explicitly. And that's why I'm challenging you all to do that and do it early so that we do, we do get part of the listservs for community associations, we do get people, speakers and others to, to, to get that information out. I, I just, I know we will, we have yet to do a version of that that I think is rich, as rich as, and as comprehensive as we need to have. And this is, this is our moment, to be honest, to do that. I'm just strongly encouraging that process. And that we, the board see that because you're going to get people like me who can push back on these challenges, and why not this, why not that? And I think now is the time. If that's, if that strategy's not laid in July, I don't see how it's going to get executed in time to really achieve the result that we want in September, October. Thank you.
Matt, did you want to respond to that?
First, I would agree that we need to do that. The task force right now might be, I don't know if Kathy can bring up the list of people on the task force. There are some representatives that aren't necessarily the, the norms from people active in schools. So there's some from community, I'm from the Great Falls Citizens Association. There's other people from different organizations that aren't just school-associated. That doesn't diminish your point that we have to get back out. I met with Matt from the communications group a couple of weeks ago. We're going to lay out a schedule of how we, how we seek information and then how we, I don't want to use the word selling it with the manipulative side, but how do we present this as, here is a hard balancing. You guys already did, you know, you, you may think you've all done the hard work. You've done the easier out of the next 100, right? So the next 100 is a lot harder than, than the 100 before it. So your point's well taken. What we didn't want to do and is make the current making of the sausage public. What we wanted to make public was, we're gathering information. So we've, in each of the meetings that Kristen talked about, we were very clear, go back to your organizations, go back to everybody you deal with, get as many ideas as possible. So the user voice has been somewhat successful. I'm sure there's communities that aren't as well represented. As a matter of fact, I talked to Ms. Strauss earlier in, right. And, and even within communities that are well represented, we're missing chunks of it. So I've been able to find a lot of people in McLean and Great Falls, not as many in Herndon. And that's just an area that's only, you know, eight miles from me. So reach, we've been reaching out. We need more, but everybody, by starting with a broader than just school-oriented group, we're at least reaching into communities that we hadn't automatically reached into, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. I have Mrs. Strauss, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you very much for this progress report. First of all, the way that you have organized the website and the information is genius. Because in other times when we've had to think about very difficult budget situations, you have obviously been very open in trying to sort of lay everything out on the table. And then you have organized this in such a way that folks can actually focus on. For example, you've got high, medium, low impact. You've got stuff that you can't be considered because of X, Y, or Z, so we don't waste a whole lot of time on that. I, I think that you've just, you know, you are laying out a communication strategy, and there are great people on this committee. So this is, I think, excellent, excellent. I mean, however you guys devise it, good work. The, um, what is already beginning to trickle out into the community? And it's, it's already begun, which is fine, is a lot of the pieces that are particularly in the high and the medium impact. People who understand what this would do to our schools and the school system. They're already beginning to see this eyes wide open, and this would do us in. So, you know, and you're, you're beginning to, to lay this out, what this means. So, very good job. One of the questions that I have, and I know I've spoken very quickly with Dr. Garza, obviously the message and the work that we do on this is going to be critical. The, I think some of our funding sources are nervous because they don't really want to destabilize the school system. That would be a terrible thing. So the question is, is timing? And when a lot of this information comes out, and clearly, as we are going to work closely with both the, our county and with the state, how quickly and how early we can have meaningful conversations so that, so that we are not left six weeks before budget decisions are made? Because I know that was part of the discussion. So that we have these tough discussions early enough so that we, so that we can craft a solution that we hope that the community will support and that will be good for our kids. So I know that's part of the timetable. And what are your thoughts on that as we sort of move forward with this?
Now, are you speaking of meetings with the board supervisors?
With the board supervisors and as, as this gets rolled out publicly? Because this has to be a very robust discussion, early enough on, so that hopefully we can find some solutions that are reasonable.
With regard to the timeline, I think we've articulated to the community why this time, why we have to begin this process now.
Exactly.
Yeah, we can't wait until after critical events are over, or wait until January, because I have to present a balanced budget on January the 7th. We all know that has to be done in December.
Right.
For that to, to get accomplished. Plus, you know, we've shown the plan, school planning calendar. If we affect staffing at all, there it is. Yeah, and this is not, this is not unique to this year. Now, it's unique in that the impact is pretty significant. And certainly, we've experienced this in 17, and, and this is not something that's just new for fiscal year 17. It was, we experienced it for many years, and moving forward is going to continue. Now, I know that the board supervisors are interested in an early meeting. I think that we're going to be visiting with Pat Hines with regard to when we get that scheduled. I think they've requested a meeting on September 11th. We think early is better, no doubt. I think that was something that Joint Budget Development Committee had even contemplated being done in junior July. I don't, but, anyway. I think we're struggling a little bit with figuring out the date, just because that's our, you know, first week back of school, and we certainly don't want to sit down at a meeting with the board supervisors when we haven't even talked with our, our board about kind of where we are status. So we're kind of struggling with when that gets scheduled, but we do think early is better.
Right, because it's my understanding that there is high interest this time in meeting earlier rather than later, so that we can, can have a thoughtful discussion about this. And this calendar, by the way, because this came out very early on, and I've explained this to people, and people who are not involved in schools don't understand how early we have to make decisions on what courses we will offer in the coming year. This is startling.
Yeah.
And so I'm very glad that that was one of the first things you rolled out. Very descriptive of what we're facing.
Okay. I'm going to move us on, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Hines, and we still have some more presentation to do here.
Well, I just want to make sure then, my question I can ask at this, I'm looking at the eight-page, we were just talking about the high, medium, and small, so I can make inquiries. So I guess my first question is, it was my understanding that one of the difficult challenges we had as a board was our community engagement on later start times. And one of the things that we had to work very hard as a board in school system is that later start times was not about trading one thing for another, that this philosophically was the right thing to do as a school system. So I'm trying to understand why it's showing up as a budget cut option.
Go to the, what we say about it.
And keep in mind, to where I think you're going with this, Ms. McLaughlin, is, I think we've been pretty clear with folks who bring that up, is that's not something we can consider at this juncture, a retreat on later high school start times. However, when people bring it up, we feel like we have to reflect it. I don't think we're in a position at this point, for transparency purposes, to filter what people suggest. What we're saying is, we're reflecting it, but we're saying why we think it's not a, could be not, should not be considered at this point. And I forget what page it's on. We show that.
I know it's not me.
Ms. McLaughlin, the other thing, while she digs that up, you guys are getting briefed very early. What we've completed is the brainstorming phase. So during that phase, we didn't critique and say, that's a bad idea, that's against the philosophy, that's against the policies. We were very clear that throughout every idea, we'll rank them, we'll, the only ones that we purposely cut out were things that were either, as you'll see, already being implemented, no way to do it within a year, or weren't legal, right? I mean, that's really the only things that have been eliminated. The other things, we may not prioritize, but we were trying very hard to not be negative during a brainstorming session. So unfortunately, we're briefing you at that point, not after we've prioritized things, but our process was not to be negative during brainstorming. So we're getting briefed a little early, and I just want you to know that.
Right, so the, and the other thing I want to point out, we've also said, given the situation we're in, everything has to be on the table. But at the end of the day, I think I've made it very clear, at the end of the day, this is a group that will make some recommendations to me, and I will continue to work with the board, but ultimately, at the end of the day, and I've said this, it's the board and the superintendent working with the board, we're ultimately the ones responsible for making the decision. Certainly, we're interested in what our stakeholders have to say, and that's what this process is for. So I think that's a good example of why, I'm glad you raised it, because we've already communicated and talked with them about, you know, we've already purchased the buses. That was in last year's budget. The change is already in fiscal year 16. It's already, you know, it's already.
Right, the, the challenge we're going to have, though, is if you, you know, the title of the document says, draft a preliminary menu of potential reductions and fees. There's nothing next to it that's going to lead anybody to believe that that's, you know, not really something. So in other words, the public who's looking at this and trying to understand, for those who did not understand nor supported the decision by this board, they're, they're going to see it back on there and go, okay, you know, see? The school system recognizes, they can probably just eliminate that. I just, it, it worries me a little bit because there's not a lot of context here, and the general public reading it isn't going to understand the nuances to that being listed there. So I just, I really wanted to bring this to the attention of everybody that, it worries me. The other thing is that with the athletic fees, it's listed in the category of medium, which falls in the two to $5 million range. And what I remember the last time we looked at this from a budget cost, it was about $1.8 million if we were to charge $100 fee for the athletes, because you have to keep in mind that our free and reduced lunch students are not going to be able to pay that, so they'll get a waiver. And that there were notable administrative costs to the schools to collect the money, and so that the net result of what we were getting out of it was not even $1 million. So I, I worry, and again, I realize, Dr. Garza, that in the end, it's all going to come down to you and your leadership team anyway, but for the public's understanding of thinking, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, and yet, it did, one of the reasons that I felt the board wasn't supportive continuing to do that is, the net loss of money that just went into paying for the administrative costs of, of collecting it started to seem like, why are we doing this to our families? So that one gives me pause. And then the other question is, I did not see this listed here, but obviously, we know, looking at our budget, where is it being reflected that right now, what we want, you know, what we are faced with for FY17 is looking at compensation increases? So, you know, STEP, COLA, I mean, is this saying, here's this list on top of the fact that we won't offer any of that? I'm just, I don't see the context of where that is here.
I don't think the decision has been that we won't offer any of that. On our fiscal forecast, which we've been over time and time again, we are currently showing the same increase that the county is showing for their employees for the fiscal forecast, but that's just a fiscal forecast. And that's why we're coming up with three scenarios for cuts, because there's still a lot of unknowns right now. You know, the 50, 75, and 100. I think as we move a little further into the fall, we'll know better what's going to happen to the LCI. It could be much worse, it could, you know, I, I don't know. There are a lot of nuances to that. Certainly, we, we will have the opportunity sometime in the fall to determine what we're going to do with salary and compensation.
Oh, so is, is that the challenge here, timing-wise, is that, and, and maybe this is where it was trying to say that toward the bottom, compensation as a whole is not part of the conversation right now because you're doing compensation study? I mean, because I see things like reduce all contracts, you know, from one, two, or three days, reduce, and that's in the high category, but there's nothing here that's talking about the COLA, the STEP, and what that costs.
The salaries are reflected, the salary increases are reflected in our shortfall. So the reduction could be eliminate the market scale adjustment and eliminate the STEP. So those are something that could be an option that goes into the tool that you're going to see. But this list, again, was a preliminary list to guide the task force. So what the public is going to see is going to be more than what we have here. The high, medium, and low was trying to just give the task force some indication of where the cost component is going to end up in some of these areas.
We're very early in the process. We're very early in the process.
We were afraid that we were going to spend all of our time on small impact items in our discussions at the task force meetings.
We had some discussions where people were spending inordinate amounts of time on things that were $50,000.
Right.
So, you know, we weren't going to do 400 of those. That just wasn't, you know, if it's a $50,000 decision, we have talented managers that can work on those. So the other thing is, this is a pretty, the list you have is an early cut. So we're doing a snapshot as of midnight tonight for our meeting on Wednesday of all of the other ideas. There are probably 250 ideas, of which we have 75 or 80 on which you have in front of you. So you're getting an early snapshot of that. The input to us, and Kristen mentioned this in the very, about the first meeting, was the status of why we have an $80.4 million shortfall assumes some things. It assumes the transfer being as defined by the county, it assumes the salaries, as you guys have laid it out so far in the forecast. We're ignoring the forecasts. We're focusing on, if we were to cut the number of days, what would it be? If we were to cut the salary, what would it be? Those are items in there. Those, the prioritization, please don't read too much into it. That was just so that we would get people to not focus on the $50,000 items and to focus on.
And you can see that the board members are ready to get to work already. And I totally get that.
No, no.
I think tonight, we were just wanting, or today, wanted to share with you what the task force is working on, although we're still, this will only be our third meeting tomorrow. So, yeah, you will have plenty of opportunity to weigh in and, and give us direction with regard to development of the budget. But, yeah, this is just an update on this, on the task force work, but be sure to write us about those things that you think need to be reflected on the list. Certainly send us your concerns about anything that's reflected there, so we know about that.
Well, so the reason I was bringing it up is, I remember, it was right as we were in the midst of the greatest part of our recession. And the, the input we got from the employees' associations was, we would rather you not eliminate positions or cut contract lengths, but, you know, look at compensation increases. So that, it was sort of the idea of, we don't want to necessarily wipe out people's jobs. We don't want pink slip people while others are getting pay raises. So that's, I, I'm just trying to understand if, and if that's changed, that's fine, but I just, I'm, I'm looking at this list and.
We actually ask that question every year. You know, these are the trade-offs.
You know, I'm going to keep us moving, but what I'm hearing, Ms. McLaughlin, say is, why isn't the issue of compensation on this list if, if we're putting everything on the list? And I'm hearing others say that's because that's in the fiscal forecast, and that's kind of off the table and creating part of the deficit.
And also, if you see the, if we could go to the tool, in the tool, there will be an option where it says to eliminate the market scale adjustment.
But if you don't have things all in one place. But if you don't have things all in one place, you're giving people...
We will when we're done.
I'm very worried that the public looking at this eight-page document, nothing lists here about compensation and the cost.
Okay, it sounds like, it sounds like when we get to the tool, it might be a little more clear. Kathy, did you want to say something to help clarify, and then we're going to move on?
Okay, I'm very concerned that we don't have clarity of purpose for what we're doing here. I feel like we don't have clarity of purpose of, to me, we're learning about the work that the task force has done. The Board is going to have a piece in this whole process. I don't see our job right now to get into the details of what the task force is doing and saying, "Good, bad, indifferent, and change it," but perhaps it would help if the Board had better clarity about how we use the tool. Dr. Garza referenced the fact, she wants to hear from Board members about what they want her to be aware of. So, perhaps if we gain some clarity about where our place is, how we best deal with that, that would help.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I also think that these fundamental questions that people have been asking need to be answered, too, just so we understand what the process is and what's in and what's out and things like that. So, I'll go to Ms. Hines, Mr. Valcoff, and then we'll get to the tool.
Okay, thank you. So, just, so, thank you, Ms. Smith, because I think I'm also trying to make sure I know what I'm supposed to walk away from this meeting knowing and being ready to do, right? So, to me, the value of this task force to us as a Board is that instead of having, you know, compensation and class size as the two things that we decide, "Okay, we'll cut those because we have to make cuts," instead, we have the, we have community members helping to create sort of an exhaustive list that is going to be vetted and looked at, and everything will be measured and all that. So, that will be very helpful to us, I think, as a Board when it all is finished. So, I just want to thank all the task force members for all the work you're doing. I'll be meeting with my representative soon to get, you know, his feedback. But, so, as far as I am, what would be sort of a good strategy for me then as a school Board member right now? Because I'm tempted to send out a keep in touch, right, to everybody in my, you know, sort of a newsletter that says, "Just to update you on the superintendent's task force, here's a link to the website," and just, you know, give a little bit of an understanding of where it's headed. So, do we have, and if it's here and I missed it, I'll look at it, but do we have sort of a summary like that, that I could include with a link to the website for my constituents?
I think from the superintendent updates, we have some items, and then Kristin's been following up with, after every meeting, you've been getting a synopsis of the meetings. So, that might be helpful, too, but we can certainly look to see what we can provide you.
Okay, Mr. Valcoff.
Mrs. Reed, forgive me if this isn't appropriate, but in the context of the relationship with the supervisors in the meeting in September, I would put forward a thought for everybody. The most constructive thing I think we could do is to reach some kind of agreement with the Board of Supervisors about what constitutes appropriate compensation for our employees. For instance, being in the top-third of WABE or something. If we simply had a framework that they, that we jointly could agree upon, I think it would go a long way to eliminating some of the contention. My concern is, they're going to look at the, but some of them, I think, will look at our budget, they're going to see $134 million shortfall, they're going to say $72 million of that is compensation, we're giving you 55, take out the 72, you're only $7 million off, you're going to be fine. And you can't have a conversation unless you've decided upon, you know, an agreed-upon set of values. So, I would say that is, in my opinion, this is the most important thing we can do, because if we could reach that, then, you know, then we'd be able to talk to each other.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Just a few other things while staff are commiserating down there. For Dr. Garza, do you attend all these meetings, are you or staff? Yes, okay.
Yeah, the staff's there every time. There's been some debate about if they want me there the whole time or not, because I don't want them to get the impression that, you know, we're trying to shape, we really want them to put all their ideas on the table. But, I've, I'm attending every one of them, I'll tell them, I'll stay as long as they want me to, so, I've given them complete discretion over how much time I spend there.
Because it would seem to me it sends a message that it's really important, and we really do want to hear if the Superintendent's there. Are all people participating? I'm just curious about that, because I look at the list of names, and we've got some very outgoing folks in that group. They break up into small groups, I guess, for Matt. Do you feel like everybody's given ample opportunity to voice their opinion?
Yeah, everybody's given ample opportunity, and one of the things we did was to try and, we have a great moderator that's a staff member that's helping. Since everybody's not the same kind of learner, not the same kind of participant, we had a suggestion, for example, to create subcommittees. What we did is, we meet in small tables, we also created the subcommittees virtually. So, using Blackboard, we have a discussion board, so some people would much rather, you know, instead of trying to shout someone down, they'd rather just type in their issues. So, our participation isn't the same way from everybody. I wouldn't say that we have 100% participation, because you never have 100% summertime, right? But, we have good participation, and there's some people that participate in multiple ways, we have some people that only participate in one way, but we have large-group discussions, we have small-group discussions, we have electronic discussions, we've had phone-call discussions. So, we're trying to find different means, and it seems to, seems to be working. Since we have a talented moderator and we have the technology, the virtual discussion boards have been a great way, because we just are limited, we can't get people to come to 30 meetings, but anybody can participate asynchronously, and that seems to be working. So, I think our participation rate is high, I'd love 100%, so I'm always bummed when it's not, however, it's pretty broad.
Okay, that's terrific, thank you. And last question, just to reiterate, I think, the obvious, we're just focusing on the operating fund and not on the capital or any of the other funds, right?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Do you want to talk about...
Yeah, so, before we go to the tool, I just wanted to take just one second to show everyone user voice, because I wanted to make sure that you all had seen it, and you know that that information is there in case you want to look. So, from the task force webpage, we also added the link to user voice in the top-right corner. So, when you go to user voice, right now, it's sorted by the top suggestions, so, so that, the ones that have the most votes. You can also click on new, and that'll show you the newest items. You can resort the items depending on how you want to look at them, but just, I wanted to make sure you all knew that you could access that information, and it's updated constantly. Okay? So, if we go back to the budget task force page, it's called...
It's on the front page.
Correct. So, on the main page, we have that whole new paragraph on FY '17 budget. Included in there is the link to share your ideas, that's the link to user voice, and the link to the task force is also right there as well. Okay? All right, so, the last thing we wanted to show you today is our budget balancing tool. This is something we're really excited about. You need to know that the version that we're showing you today is really preliminary, so we're just starting to work on it. We know we have a really short timeframe, and I really appreciate the great support that we've been getting from Information Technology in terms of getting this put together. When you look at this tool, obviously, the very first thing many of you will notice is that we don't even have the right suite number in the top-right corner. So, again, I remind us all that this is very preliminary, and it's not going to end up looking like this in the end. Okay?
Some of you heard about this tool as being used by Arlington.
Correct, so, this is the tool that was at the National School Board Association that Pat Murphy from Arlington County had demoed. So, when we heard that they used that tool, I reached out to their chief financial officer, who many of you know, Deirdre McLaughlin, and said, "Is there any way that you would consider allowing us to use the code that you started when developing this tool?" And Arlington, Pat Murphy, Deirdre, and then their IT staff have really been exemplary in terms of giving us that information. So, we've taken their information and we're building it in our own tool. So, the version that you're seeing today, not only is it preliminary, but we've also filled it with data that's just made up, so we could go through the exercise and see it today. So, in the end, what you're going to see in these tiles are the actual items from the menu item, the potential reductions at the bottom and potential additions at the top. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about how this tool is organized. So, you'll see at the top, there's a section for items called additions. What that means is, those are items that are actually going to add to the deficit. Now, we're not sure in the end if we really want to have an addition section, but it does provide some opportunities. Say, for example, someone who's developing their budget scenario really wanted to give employees a higher salary increase, they could actually use the additions block to add additional salary increases, thus increasing the deficit. So, that's what additions means. At the bottom of the screen, the lower section, what you're going to see are all of the potential reductions as well as fee increases. So, everything on the bottom decreases the deficit, so that's kind of how they're segmented. And then, in the middle of the page is where you develop your budget proposal. So, if we look at one of the items in the reduction section, what you're going to see is, each of those tiles is going to have a title on it, and when you roll your mouse over it, it's going to pop up a description.
Just swing your mouse down and roll back over so you can see the description. It just popped up. I don't know if you had noticed, but when she rolls over, it gives you a little bit more information about that particular tile. When we say tile, it's the each reduction box.
So, our goal is to have a limited title that you can see, and then, when you roll your mouse over it, another description pops up. So, one of the things we're still working on are the different formats that this will work in, because we also want to ensure that this tool is going to work seamlessly for people on other devices like iPads, not just your computer. So, when you roll over it, it's going to pop up that description. So, then, what happens is, when you click on an item and you drag it into your budget proposal, you'll immediately see it change your deficit total in the right. Okay? So, you saw that she just dragged an item in there, and our deficit just went down from $100 million. Okay? So, some of the tiles also have options for you to select different amounts. So, if we were to look at a type of fee, we could decide what the fee level was. So, if we take it, you can actually adjust that number, and it will also change your deficit for you. Make sense? So, then, you're able to drag those in. Conversely, if you drag an item in from the additions, you're going to see that it's going to increase your deficit. So, we'll have three versions, you can submit your recommendation for a $50 million scenario, $100 million scenario, and the $75 million, which I skipped, those aren't in order. So, once you've completed your scenario and you've drug enough of the tiles in there, you'll see that you've gotten your budget balance. So, right now, you'll notice we only have a few tiles on here to show you today, but we expect that list to be really long, right? It will have many different tiles on there. So, we're working on things like sorting those tiles potentially by order or by color to help make it easy for people to see what their tile choices are, but they'll be able to have enough options that they'll be able to drag tiles to balance the budget. So, once they've balanced the budget, they're going to have the ability to submit that information. So, at the very bottom of the screen, you'll see that we've asked them for just a little bit of information about who they are, and then, they'll be able to submit it, and we'll be able to keep track of them and share them with the budget task force, the Superintendent and the Board, so people will be able to see what are the recommendations that we're getting. So, this is where that menu that we talked about earlier is really important, because all of the items that we end up on that final menu are going to end up becoming the tiles here that we'll be able to use for potential reductions and fee increases, right? And that's where you'll start to see those impact statements, then, when you roll over them. Right? And the last thing I want to talk about is, we're going to get people that are going to come up with additional items that we didn't think of, right? We've worked really hard to go out and get feedback, but there are going to be more options. So, you'll see that off, over to the right, there's a button that says, "Create Option." When you click on that, it's going to ask you to give a title for that option, and you'll be able to type in a title. Keep remembering, this is still preliminary. Once you click "OK," it's going to ask you for the dollar amount, and then, you'll put in the dollar amount of that reduction, or fee, or other piece. So, you'll have to know the dollar amount, and those are things that we'll need to check, but it's also going to give people the ability to make suggestions where we didn't already include that item as a choice in one of the reduction tiles. So, you can see that once she did that, it ends up in the budget task area, she can drag it up.
Kristin, one thing I wanted to ask you, I put commas in it.
There can be no commas right now. Today, for our demo version, you just need zeros.
And when will this be available, do you think, for people to use?
So, we're expecting that this tool is going to be available for people in mid-August, so that week of the 17th, right? I think our target date was Wednesday, the 19th, but certainly, as soon as we get it ready, we'll have it ready to go.
Fabulous.
So, now, you can see her custom Z option is there, and she'll be able to drag that into her proposal, and it will reduce the deficit by that amount.
That's awesome. Okay, we're going to wrap up here shortly, and I will ask Mr. Stork for the last word.
Is there a way for somebody to get feedback? They have a creative idea, they provide it, is there some way that they can get a follow-up or some kind of response with whatever that idea is? Is there any kind of interactiveness to this process?
So, one of the things at the very bottom you'll see when they submit it is, they have the ability to enter text with their suggestion. So, if they put their comments in there, we'll be able to follow up on them and get back to them, as long as they provide us with their email address. We want to make that email address optional, not required.
I think once you start typing the comment, it'll pop up with, you know, "Enter your email address."
Okay, thank you. And just last but not least, Dr. Garza, if Board members have any comments or suggestions now, they should be submitting them to who?
To any one of us, Kristin, I would say probably Kristin or me, but just like in fiscal year 15, any idea you all have, we start to collect it. The sooner we know, the better, because it takes time for our team to cost things out. So, if you have an idea, whatever that idea may be, program Z, as is pointed out up there, it takes a little bit to cost it out, so the sooner you can give us some of those ideas, we can start to explore them, look implications, and get them on the list.
Okay, very good. Ms. Hines, last word.
Okay, so, if one of our ideas is already on this list, though, obviously, it's not necessary for us to tell you about it, okay? And I'm thinking that if I send out my keep in touch, I should wait until the tool is ready to go, and maybe something else I can report on. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. This work session is adjourned.
Don't go anywhere. Not you, them. You run away. We're a whopping hour and 12 minutes behind, folks. It's a new low for me. As soon as, as soon as we can humanly, if you give me the thumbs up that we're ready to go...